First, approval of the agenda. Anyone on the commission approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Okay, a second please.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Donald, please call a roll.
Ms. Ward? Approve. Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Eliff?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Approval of the minutes, there's three of us that was at the meeting, so could we have a motion to approve or is there any adjustments to the minutes?
I have no adjustments. You weren't here.
I wasn't here.
I was here.
Okay.
Motion to approve as?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Donald, please call a roll.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Abstain.
Mr. Eliff?
Abstain.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes. Okay, first, on the agenda is a quasi judicial hearing for a planned unit development, a conditional use and variance request, case two dash twenty twenty-five P U D. And since it's a quasi judicial hearing, we have a a brief reading that I have to do. So upon, first, I'll outline the procedures. The commission will follow in hearing and deciding this matter. Under the zoning resolution, our decision is subject to appeal to the Board of Township Trustees, and then to the Court of Common Pleas. As a result, we must employ different procedures from other cases that are typically presented to the zoning commission. Because this is a quasi judicial proceeding, the commission will only receive evidence as to whether the application meets or does not meet the standards and criteria in the zoning resolution. We do not want to hear opinions dis facts relating to compliance with these standards and criteria. As a result, all persons presenting testimony before the commission, whether for or against the applicant's position, may only do so after being sworn in. All witnesses will be subject to cross-examination. The staff will present a summary of the application. The applicant will then present its case. The board members may ask questions of the staff and anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. If an attorney presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be a witness. As a result, the attorney's statements are not considered as evidence. Evidence only comes in through the witnesses who testify before the commission after being sworn in. The burden is on the applicant to present evidence that the application satisfies the standards and criteria for approval. After the applicant presents its case to its witnesses, all persons in the audience supporting the application will be permitted to testify, one at a time, after being recognized by the chair. When all persons supporting the application are finished, those opposed to the application will then be permitted to testify after being recognized by the chair. If anyone in opposition is presented, is represented by an attorney, that party will go first, followed by any members of the audience. As stated previously, all persons wishing to testify whether for or against the application may only do so after being sworn in. When testifying, each person from the audience must come forward to the podium after being recognized by the chair, speak into the microphone and state their name, address, and any affiliation to the case. All persons testifying will be limited to four minutes unless a commission member requests that they be given additional time. All testimony is to be directed to the commission only. No comments or questions are to be directed to the applicant or anyone else in the audience. The commission will only hear new non-repetitive evidence or questions. Should someone wish to show support of previous testimony, they may do so by following the testimony procedures and stating their support of previous testimony. Now, all persons who may give testimony this evening, please stand, raise your right hand. Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Drury, could you please present the case?
Yes, thank you. This is case two twenty twenty-five P U D. The applicant is Dan Montgomery, who is the Associate Principal of M S A Design on behalf of Anderson Township Board of Township Trustees, who is the property owner. Location is at seventy-nine fifty-four Beauchamp Avenue, and the zoning there is split into two zoning districts. It's E Retail and C Single Family Residence. So there's several requests here tonight. One is a P U D request for improvements as well as a conditional use with the split zoning. So we're hearing this all as a P U D that will incorporate the conditional use as well. And we'll go, so the request is a new Public Works Building, renovation of the Operations Center. We'll get to the site plan. I can, I think it'll be more clear once we get to the site plan. But a new Public Works Building, a small addition to the Fire Department, a small addition to the Sheriff Building, a pavilion for the Senior Center, a new Salt Dome, and then elimination of the recycling facility and elimination of what we call a storage barn. This will increase the impervious surface ratio to seventy-five point one five percent, which is the need for a P U D. We'll come back to that. So there's quite the history of this site, and we'll just briefly go through it. We think that the township has had occupation of this site from, since about the nineteen forties. Just through some old historic photos, when the parcels were consolidated, the auditor put in a new transfer date, so we think around nineteen forties is when the township had this property. There's been miscellaneous zoning certificates throughout the years, and these are since nineteen eighty-eight is what we have record for when the township started zoning. So the latest was in two thousand eight, and this was really for the freestanding sign out front. There was a study. It was called the Government Center Redevelopment Study that was completed in June of two thousand six. This called for an expansion of the Operations Center north into what now has become the Stonegate Apartments. So at that time, it was contemplated to expand the recycling facility toward the north to have a separate access out to Nagel through the north of the property. That did go through a zoning process of a portion of that site, but ultimately it was determined not to expand onto that property. There was the adoption of the comprehensive plan or an update to the comprehensive plan, and in the comprehensive plan, there was a study, housing study, and it showed a need in the township for more multifamily housing within the township, and that was a way for the township to help implement the comprehensive plan. So ultimately, the property to the north was sold to Mayerson Company, who ultimately built the Stonegate Apartment Buildings, the two apartment buildings. And that was approved back in twenty eighteen. So during that rezoning, that was rezoned to D D multifamily, there was also a requirement for an access drive to that apartment building out to Beauchamp Avenue to provide as a secondary access. And that is the most important to this zone change as well, is that is, or this isn't a zone change, but to this zoning hearing, is that is proposed to remain. So with that, the township still has a need for improvements to that site, and we'll go over those improvements. And so we started looking at how to consolidate and make the best use of all township services on that site. It is a limited site, but we'll see from the site plan what the proposal is. So this is the property map itself. It's highlighted in yellow. Beauchamp Avenue is right here. This is the current fire station. This is the Public Works Building, which is also shared by the Sheriff's Office. This is what we call the barn, but it's a storage building, the Salt Dome, and the Senior Center. So all of that is what is called the Operations Center. This is the topography map. It's fairly flat. There is a detention basin toward the northern portion, the northwest corner of the site. This is the aerial. This is the current recycling facility, and then surface parking for primarily Public Works employees as well as the Sheriff's Office. There are pedestrian connections to the Senior Center, to Sound Manor. Sound Manor is here to the north. These are the Stonegate Apartments that we're discussing. This is the shopping center next door, which is Ortho Sensi now, Kane's Restaurant, Firestone, and then Single Family, and then a church over here to the north. This is the surrounding zoning, D D multifamily to the north, retail to the west. This is the area of the site that is on C Single Family that requires a conditional use. We have retail, single family, and retail to the south. So for the proposed improvements, and the map is flipped, so this is Beauchamp Avenue here to the left of the slide, and then Stonegate Apartments over here to the, to the right of the slide. This is the main entrance. This is the Forestville School District Offices, and again, the fire station. So as proposed to, and we'll just kind of go down the drive so you can see what's going on, modification of the fire station parking lot to add a few spaces here and a few spaces toward the end. This would be the small addition onto the back of the fire station. And again, I should back up. This would be a phased improvement. It wouldn't all happen at the same time, especially with such a tight site. So there would be phased development over time. The first phase would be the Public Works Maintenance Building, which is this building to the, the top. This proposed building is approximately twenty-six thousand six hundred fifty square feet. This would be the main entrance into the building for the trucks, and then an office entrance in this particular vicinity. So the trucks' storage would be in this particular area. This would also be a wash bay and the maintenance bay. So truck storage to the, in this portion of the building, and then maintenance on this portion of the building as well as maintenance offices. This is that access drive that I was referring to earlier that would remain, and this is public access drive to both Sound Manor and to Stonegate Apartments. Around the whole area, there would be security fencing so that this immediate area would only be for township staff and employees, which we do not really have that secure of an area now. There is a gate, but this would secure the area for township vehicles, Sheriff's Office, et cetera. This is currently the Public Works Garage, as, the maintenance garage, as well as shared space with the Sheriff's Office. So, and a future phase, once the new Public Works Building is constructed, there would be some renovations, small expansion to the sheriff's space to add a Sallyport. There currently is none, so they have to, they have a prisoner, they, they take them into the side of the building, but they would add that into the back so that you could safely pull on the sheriff car and close the garage door. There would be some shared space between the sheriff and Public Works in the garage here for storage for both uses. And then replacement, so there would be removal of the existing barn, because you could use this, this building for storage, and then some of this area would also be used for storage. Replacement of the Salt Dome with the newer Salt Dome, or newer Salt Storage Building. Fencing again around the entire site. Potentially, an expansion of the parking lot here if extra spaces for the Senior Center are needed in the future. The Senior Center currently shares parking with Firestone as well as the church. But if for some reason that were to not become available, potential expansion of parking here. This would be tandem spaces for only township staff, and then the Senior Center patrons would park in the, in the area that they normally do. So as far as the numbers are, again, twenty-six thousand six hundred fifty square feet for the Public Works Maintenance Building, the small addition onto the back of the fire station, approximately sixteen hundred square feet, a small addition, really just a square off the building, the Sheriff Building, just to make as much storage space as possible. That would be five hundred twenty-five square feet. The Salt Storage Building would be slightly larger than what is currently there. That would be six thousand five hundred square feet. This is an open-air pavilion for the Senior Center. This has been something the seniors, or the patrons to the Senior Center have been asking for an outdoor area to gather. So this was something that was discussed even before the Operations Center, where we're including it into the P U D request. As far as parking goes, their total would be a hundred and fifty-six parking spaces, and that is including inside parking for the, in the Public Works, and then potential for some inside parking at the Sheriff's Building. Also, connections to the Ortho Sensi property as well as Firestone would stay the same. Those are your cross-access as well as cross-access to Stonegate. There is also a striped pedestrian path currently along this drive, and the proposal is to install a raised sidewalk to make that safer for pedestrians to keep the pedestrian access in the back to the Senior Center as well as to the church. It would require a slight relocation once the future storage building. So as far as phasing, again, the Public Works Building is scheduled for first. Once that is constructed, removal of the storage barn, and then potentially the future storage Salt Building. And then there hasn't really been a timeframe yet for the fire station and the addition to the Sheriff's. So that's kind of the phasing of it. It would take, it's going to take logistics because the site will have to continue operation during all construction. So it's moving pieces. Once something is built, then, you know, something can be torn down and just movement of all of that. Currently, the I S R is seventy-three percent, and again, the proposed would be seventy-five percent. This is the site location plan. The grading plan, again, there's not too much grading that will have to take place on this, like, on the site. There is a slight elevation change from the front of the Public Works Building to the rear of the Public Works Building. So there is a small retaining, well, actually, this would be able to be graded, so you will have the drive around and then the exit to the, from the garage. The detention basin is still going to be in the same location, and it is not required to be increased in size. It has adequate size currently. This is the landscaping plan. I know it's kind of hard to see. One of the requests is a variance from interior landscaping of the parking area that would be solely for township employees and township equipment. So the proposal here is to add additional perimeter landscaping along the access drive as well as around the Salt Storage Building. There are, you know, residential properties to the north of the site, so the idea is to screen these facilities as much as possible to the residential from Sound Manor and Stonegate Apartments. There is no proposed change over here on the east side. These are where the Senior Center backs up to the single family houses there. The landscaping, the existing landscaping would remain the same. The photometric plan, which is compliance, point one foot candles to the north adjacent to residential, same. No changes to lighting on the east side. There is lighting proposed primarily as wall packs on the buildings themselves to illuminate the parking area in the middle here. So this was the elevation of the new Public Works Building. This would be the elevation that faces south toward Beauchamp Avenue. You have the entry into the vehicle storage here. This, that's what this garage door would be. This garage door here is for the maintenance bay. So you have a wash bay and a maintenance bay, and the maintenance bay is wide enough that you could have two vehicles stacked next to each other. In case one, they start working on one and have to set it to the side to wait for parts, it can be in the garage as well. Whereas currently, we do not have the space for that, and our doors currently aren't even tall enough to put in the fire apparatus and some of the larger vehicles. There is a loft that is proposed in this area as well for storage. And then the design of the building was intended to add somewhat of an angle and a slope to give it some design. This is an industrial building, but the idea was to blend it with the shopping center next door and to have at least blend with, with the area on Beauchamp Avenue. This would be the rear of the building facing Stonegate. This side of the building here is the east elevation, so that would be facing the interior parking lot, and this is the west elevation facing the access drive. These are some of the drone shots that we took, looking at Beauchamp, looking toward the north. Again, this is the Forestville School District Offices Building, so this is our fire station, and the property here is outlined, the Senior Center, Sheriff's Building. This is just looking toward the opposite direction, looking out toward Beauchamp Avenue, kind of looking toward the south. These were shot showing the existing facility. Some of the, this is the barn. We do have outside storage for salt as well, and that would be incorporated into the new Salt Dome, so we wouldn't have outside storage anymore of the salt, excess salt. This is a shot of the access drive that goes back to Stonegate, and you can see there's currently a striped pedestrian path, and that would be modified, flipped to the other side of the road. It would be a raised sidewalk, which would be safer for pedestrians going back and forth. Again, this is the barn that would be removed. This is the parking lot where it shows the outside storage of the salt, the excess salt, and it's parking for our Public Works trucks, which will now be able to be moved inside. Same way for the Sheriff's Vehicles showing that. These are the cross-access to the Ortho Sensi to the west, and then Firestone to the east, which will remain. So when looking at a P U D, we look at zoning resolution compliance. The three areas that are not compliant, one is bicycle parking. There is bicycle parking at the Senior Center. Staff is recommending that a potential bike rack be added. It could be shared with the front building and the Sheriff's Building, or wherever most appropriate, that we get the, the best convenience of use. So that is one area. We talked about interior landscaping requirements, and this, the applicant is requesting a variance for that parking area where there is interior and there would be moverability from the trucks coming out of the garage and staff parking. So that is an area that is not in compliance. And then conditional use standards, Article five point four, there is a required fifty-foot setback for all buildings, and the proposed Salt Storage Building would not meet that. It's proposed at thirty-four feet versus fifty feet. In looking at a P U D request and a conditional use request, we look at the township's adopted plans, the Anderson Plan. Staff was of the opinion that this proposed use, again, it's been in this location for quite some time. It's centrally located, and it really is the best location for this type of service, including the fire station, centrally located, our Public Works Building. So we feel that that is compatible with the land use and development initiatives of the comprehensive plan. And then additional landscaping is proposed, especially along the northern part, to help blend this with the, and buffer this to the multifamily and the residential uses that are surrounding this site. Our Anderson Trails Plan, there are currently sidewalks on Long Beauchamp Avenue, and also pedestrian connectivity throughout the site, which is proposed to remain and be improved. Design guidelines, again, we touched on that with the elevation drawings of the new Public Works Building, as well as landscaping and pedestrian circulation. So with a government facility, conditional use standards setbacks, again, the proposed Salt Building is at thirty-four point five four feet to the northern property line versus the required fifty feet. The current building is about fifty-eight feet. An additional landscaping, evergreen landscaping, trees and shrubs is added to the northern part to help screen that area. All the other conditional use standards are in compliance. So staff's recommendation was to approve, based off of the requested variances in the plan. These are all the P U D criteria. I won't go in them in particular. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. Mr. Eliff, any questions of the staff?
Just, just one, but I think you pretty much answered it, but I'll just procedurally, so we're doing this, approving a P U D, and then we're wrapping into it the conditional use approval, which there's one required variance, which is the setback coming out of that, it looks like.
Yes.
And then we're also wrapping into this potentially a couple variances regarding the landscaping, and then you're also recommending not a variance for the bike rack.
Correct.
That they actually put the bike rack in. So I think procedurally, that's where we're at with this case.
Correct, yes.
I understand the, the building and stuff.
A setback variance for the Salt Dome, the variance for interior landscaping, yes.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Eliff. Ms. McBride, any questions of staff?
Of course, it wouldn't be zoning commission without my questions. Okay. So, did the Street Tree, the tree committee, review the landscape plan?
Not yet, no.
Okay. And then, I guess, are they going to reorient the access to the Sheriff's Building? Because right now it's at the, what, southwest corner-ish? And I think this looks like it's, or is that to remain?
So it, the front entrance will remain for public walk-ins and, and that sort of thing. The, there is a proposed gate in this particular area, so the Sallyport would be in the back, coming in one of the bays, whereas currently, there's a side entrance now. So that would be in toward the back. But yes, the main entrance to the Sheriff's Office would still be the same location.
Just a question, because I usually, the drug take back box and that kind of stuff. Is there any ability to put in a couple more parking spaces there to the south in front of the building? And I say that because if you don't know where things are, and now there's this gate there, and you don't want to block the fire trucks, that's a big no-no. It might be beneficial to, and I just throw that out for the commission's thoughts, to add a couple more parking spaces there. Then you mentioned the fencing. I missed the detail for the fencing.
The fencing is current, it would be, I think it's proposed to be what is there now, chain link, but we'll let the applicant. So it's a black chain link style fence.
And would that go around then, like where the, the senior pavilion is and so forth?
So it is, it is hard to see on this particular plan, but it would come from the edge of this building to approximately this location here by the Salt Storage Building, and then from connecting these two buildings here.
Okay, so the Senior Center wouldn't be included?
Correct, no.
And then, last but not least, on the, on the new Public Works Building, I didn't see any indication of roof-mounted equipment, so that's going to be screened?
Correct. That has been, the, the discussion is to screen any rooftop mounted equipment, and I can go back to the elevation drawings. That is the parapet here that is proposed to screen any roof-mounted equipment.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Oh, there is, yes, there is a proposed generator that would be behind the building, not on top. Yes, and it's screened with landscaping. Thank you.
Excuse me. Mr. Lewis, any questions of staff?
Yeah, I have a couple. We're tearing down a building. We're doing additions. It's building a new building. What's the net square footage change? Between what's there today versus what's proposed with all the phases?
I'll have to let the applicant speak to that.
The access road, I remember when we did the Stonegate, we had that so to get to the signal. Is that used?
Yes, it's used quite a bit.
Is there any change to that?
No, that would remain, and the cross-access actually will be better aligned to, to the west into Ortho Sensi's parking lot. So you can either go straight out to Beauchamp Avenue and make a right, or you can go over to the signal there by Kane's.
So with the square footage changing, with the number of parking spaces, is that modified because of the use of the building? Some of it's not a commercial per se where, in retail.
That the number of spaces for the township.
Hundred fifty-six.
So this was discussed by staff, and we were taking into consideration shift change for the sheriffs. Not so much shift change for the Public Works employees, but it was vetted through all departments of what we thought the optimum number of spaces would be. We're trying to maximize the site as much as possible.
There's a lot of shared use, right?
Yes, right.
And it doesn't hit the number?
And the Fire Department as well.
Is a hundred fifty-six the right number, or?
That's what we've come, that we feel like we can get on that site. I think preferred to have more if we could, but we can't, so there's not enough room.
Okay. And what happens to the recycling?
The recycling currently is proposed to be removed from this location. So we're working at different, we're actually doing a, a survey, onsite survey of users of the recycling center this coming weekend to find out who's using that. We have a group from our Anderson Plan Implementation Committee that's also looking at recycling townshipwide. So if, if you are in just a house, it's offered through your trash collection. You pay one bill for your trash, and recycling is included. We're working with our, our APIC group to see if recycling can be offered through apartments and condo complexes, because most of them are not offering recycling. But we've been in touch with Runkie as well to see. But we've been in touch with Rumpke as well to see if that can be a possibility, just to cut down the need for the recycling facility.
But it is well-used today?
It is well-used, but we're not sure by who yet and if it are township residents and if, if they are outside of the township, how we can accommodate that and see if there's a different way to recycle versus our current recycling facility.
Okay. And I didn't see where staff had any call-outs or special criteria in your recommendation?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ward, any questions of staff?
Just a couple more. I heard about the timing for the various things. You didn't mention the senior center pavilion. Is that like last TBD after the two firehouse?
I think the preference of that is, is to add it in the first phase.
And my other question, I was, why can't the salt, new salt pavilion be a little bit smaller to fit within the requirement?
So currently with the salt dome, there is a, what am I trying to say?
Angkor verpoda.
The conveyor, thank you. So currently, because of the height of the salt dome, a conveyor is used to put the salt in the salt dome and to put it into the trucks. The conveyor is a dangerous piece of machinery, is what we've been told, and preferred not to be used. And it's not that efficient. Same way with the salt dome itself, the inside has seen its wear. It's quite, it's a little bit older. So the proposed salt storage building that, that we're looking at, it's easier to load and it's easier to unload and it's more efficient. And this would eliminate the need for that outside storage. So we have extra bins currently that are in the parking lot. I don't know if you saw those in some of the photos.
Right.
So the new salt would put everything undercover into that one building.
Yeah, and I understand the new building. It seems like the difference is only like 10 feet or whatever, but it couldn't, like, it has to be, it looks a lot larger than what the current one is. It has to be all that long so that it impacts the offset requirement?
I'll let the applicant speak to that too. Trying to separate us from the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. Have you looked at, or the applicant may be a better question for the double loaded parking for the senior center? Eliminating that number of handicap spots, where those would be relocated on-site and the net loss really of usable spaces for the public?
So, yes, the idea with these tandem spaces is that these would be used for staff and that the number of handicap spaces would remain the same. So we wouldn't be losing handicap spaces, because yes, we need as many handicap spaces as possible for the senior center. We're only including this, we did look at potentially doing a separate parking lot back here, but the cost of doing that was not feasible. So this is just shown as a possibility and is, is not any of the first couple of phases. But if for some reason we lost some of our shared parking, we would need to look at other options. But currently that's not, we have shared parking, those agreements are in place, but in the future, if for something, if for some reason that were to change, we were looking at ways to add a couple of extra spaces.
Okay.
This parking here is how, is current parking for the senior center and really that's proposed to stay the same.
And then it looked like maybe on the front or of the future salt storage building, there's a new light fixture. It's AA4W. And it's got a mounting height of 35 feet, which is 11 feet above a typical pole light standard. Has that been addressed or is that because of the height of the storage dome?
Well, ask the applicant, was that on a separate pole or on the building? I think it is on the building itself, but you're right. The foot candles were okay.
Right.
But you're right, that mounting height is, is separate, is higher than our standard poles are.
And then again, this might be for the applicant, but there's three light fixtures and I did some internet searching of what those fixtures look like. Looks like non-cut-off sort of floods. Are those existing or new or do you know?
I'll let you ask the applicant.
All right, well, thank you very much. Okay?
Mr. Drury, can I ask two additional questions?
Yes, ma'am.
So just to be clear then, the parking, they do or they don't, they will or they won't meet the code requirements?
So there aren't necessarily code requirement for this type of facility. So there is a section of the zoning resolution that, I guess, allows you to do a parking study. Our parking study was vetted through township departments and the number of vehicles.
That's an answer.
Yeah, that's.
And then the only other thing, a question that came up is, I understand the recycling is, is going away. I'm the one that had the Rumpke trash truck on fire in front of my house the other day. But, and anyway, no lithium batteries, guys. Where are the waste facilities though going to be? I mean, you know, the dumpsters for say this?
So they're currently, and it's hard to see on this, let me go back here. Currently, the dumpsters are right here and they are not enclosed and the proposal is to keep them in the same location and enclose them. No, these are for the township use.
So Public Works there, if they've got office guys, they gotta walk all the way over to the sheriff's to dump their trash?
Yes.
Does the senior center have their own?
I, I don't think they do. I'll have to ask. But yes, that's what they currently use.
But the Public Works people have big trucks. They can haul them. Okay, any other questions of staff?
I had one more.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
Why is that, did Firestone reorient it all?
We did send notices, well, in personal communication to all of our neighbors. I'm not, I don't think Firestone had a response, but Mr. Severs has been in contact with all of our neighbors.
My, my only other question was on the Public Works Building. Is that now going to, it's giving them a lot greater insight. Are they now, is that going to give them a better opportunity to stage for like weather emergencies and stuff like that?
Yes, yes, that is the intent. These stalls are long enough for the snowplows to be on the end. The other critical thing here too is the wash bay. So after an event, we have a much better wash bay than what we currently have in our, in our current building. But yes, this is just a much better building that they can, now you have to stack the trucks in this building here. In the current building, you stack the trucks about three deep and they're tight and it's very operational, it's difficult.
Mr. Elph, you have another question? Okay, all right. Okay, if the applicant would like to come and present the case to the commission, again, please state your name, address and affiliation to the case.
Hello, my name is Dan Montgomery. I'm with MSA Design. I'll give you the, the address for our company, that's 316 West Fourth Street, Cincinnati, Ohio 45202. I was pretty satisfied with, with Paul's report on this, so I don't really have a whole lot to add, any new information, but I could answer questions. I know that there was a question about the net gain in square footage. I just did a quick total of all of the square footage and it came to thirty, almost 36,000 square feet. But I don't have the square footage of the storage building that needs to be deleted from that. So I don't know. Yes, yes, yes.
Do you have any more cases you asked today?
It was on, was it on one of the drawings? I thought we had that listed, the current and the existing.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't know that particular question. The, the proposed salt dome or building, it's rectangular building. That was, that design for that was given to us by the Public Works Department. And I know that the size that they were wanting to build there was going to be adequate for their salt storage so that they could eliminate the, the exterior salt storage area, so. Yeah, I, I don't have the, the existing height of that dome.
So as far as parking goes, the current site has 113 parking spaces and then the proposed layout is 156, but that 156 also includes the new interior spots.
Right. There are 17 spaces, between 16 and 17 spaces in the, the new building. And I believe we had a dozen in the existing building, if I'm not mistaken.
Just a couple of things, obviously I'm assuming that the applicant doesn't have a problem with adding the bike rack.
Correct.
And just some comments on the, on the landscape plan. My primary concern with that was on the north property line.
Right.
And I noticed that particularly since our tree committee hasn't, has not reviewed it, we've got 24-inch ink berries going in there. I think they would probably need to be upsized. And then there's hydrangeas to the rear of the salt storage building that I don't think adds much to, to that. And I think we would probably be better off with some leather leaf by Burnham or something along there that would be more screening and would have, you know, more, be more dense throughout the winter.
Okay.
So I think that those were my only questions, comments to?
I, I know we do have some existing landscaping in that area and we're trying to augment that with things that, you know, would be, would be compatible with each other considering what's already there. But then also considering, if I'm not mistaken, that's a lower area of the site. So there were some concerns with drainage and whatnot, so.
You've got a great big building and then you've got residential.
I know, yes.
Any motion would probably be where it's recommended by our tree committee when they review the landscape.
Okay.
I'm not a landscape architect.
Okay.
Not that much, so.
Okay.
So the square footage of that barn, just on cages, was about 5,600 square feet. So 5,685.
Okay, so 36, I think it was like 35,950, if I remember right, was, let me grab that. 35,950 is the add and then we need to subtract. What was that, 50? Thirty-five thousand, nine fifty.
Thirty thousand, 265. Is the net gain.
That add, yes. Mr. Lewis, any other questions for the applicant? I know. Ms. Ward, any questions to the applicant?
No, it sounds like the only question I had, you don't have the answer for, on why the salt structure needs to be that exact length.
There, it's a modular system, I know that. So I don't know, I don't know what their other options are. I do know that what they, what they, in, in placing it where they did, they're trying to not reduce the amount of parking spaces for the senior center. So they're trying to keep it narrow to be able to maximize the parking spaces at the senior center and not impede on that or take, take away the option for adding that, those tandem parking spaces.
I guess going back to the question, there's three light fixtures, wall packs on the north of the sheriff.
So we don't.
Those are non-cut-off.
Yeah, we, we do not have any pole lights on the site that we're adding. We were trying to handle everything with wall packs. So on the, the salt building, the future salt building, what, what you were seeing is a wall pack high up at, at the peak of the building, basically. Trying to illuminate the center of that parking area because that's where you've got sheriff's deputies that are going to be parking, shift change or whatever in the middle of the night. You want that to be illuminated for safety purposes. We do have a chain link fence around. That's, that's a deterrent, but it's, it doesn't guarantee that nobody could get onto the site and looking out for the safety of, of the sheriff's deputies. They do have cameras that, and, and there's a certain foot candle that you need to reach in order for those cameras to really be able to pick up any detail at all. So just trying to keep that level of illumination in the center of the site adequate for safety measures.
So a couple of concerns from this commissioner is for that fixture being at 35 feet and with the apartments just to the north. And based on the information of the potential sort of shape of the salt storage, you know, you're gonna get a lot of bleed around to the back, to the north into those residential areas. So, you know, house side shields I think would be a minimum if nothing else could be to reduce the amount of light coming back. And then the three that are on the north side of the sheriff, since those are truly floodlights, the ones on the storage bill, or the new Public Works Building have a cutoff angle based on what I found online. These on the sheriff's building are just straight out floods.
Okay.
And they're going to be flooding towards those neighbors to the north. So if I was in those apartments, I would not be pleased. So, you know, I think we need to look at a different sort of lighting program to get that area that provides that screening of the lights or the direct glare to residential neighbors.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay. Yes.
How tall is that chain link fence? And is it black vinyl coated?
So, so there is a portion of the chain link fence that's going to remain, at least for, for the time being. I don't think the long-term plan is to replace it. And that is the, the portion that runs from north to south between the sheriff's building and the, the future salt storage building. A good chunk of that will remain as is and that is six foot. We are going to match that along the access drive. That'll all be six foot tall, black chain link fence and as well the gates.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor of the application? Please state your.
I want to speak, but since there were some questions, Ms. Earhart may want to join me, but since there were some questions, I'd just like to.
Please state your name, address.
I sure will. Steve Severs, I think I live here, 7855 Mile Road. On behalf of the applicant in Anderson Township, we kind of put our, our applicant at this advantage on some of these questions because they're representing us on portions of the site, but we wanted the zoning commission to have a full appreciation of what we're looking at long-term. So our first and foremost is to address the Public Works Maintenance Facility. Ms. Ward, to your question, the outdoor senior space for the senior center is something we've authorized design for and that's proceeding as well in tandem with this. The other elements are kind of subsequent and we wanted you to see all of that. We are happy to come back with additional details. We just don't have those at this point in time, particularly since it sounds like there's some questions on salt storage. But I do want to touch on a few things that are part of this and I'll kind of go down the list that I have here from things that we heard. If there are other questions for myself or Ms. Earhart or the applicant, we're happy to address those. So the neighbor outreach, our focus of our neighbor outreach has particularly been to the north and to the west. That's been the Forest Hill School District, the Pinnacle Plaza Shopping Center to the west and then to Sem Manor and the Mayerson Company owner of Stonegate Apartments to the north. So we've had communications with each of them. They may be represented here tonight, I'm not sure, but we've been trying to work through any questions that they had, which were fairly minimal. Again, our effort here is to really clean up an industrial site in the middle of our retail area, which now abuts the residential area, which we're very cognizant of, of those impacts. As far as the building, Mr. Lewis, your questions, a lot of the new building that we have here are for built for vehicles. So we're not really building buildings for more people, for more like you would in a retail or an office. We're building it to put vehicles inside them, hence the growth in the number of spaces. And basically, most of that sheriff's building will be maintained either for storage of build, vehicles or some sort of equipment that's currently outside. So it's a lot of covering what's out there, which we think is a dramatic improvement. We realize the lighting concerns, Mr. Gothther, that you're expressing. We've been kind of trying to go through those as well. We're not proposing any kind of new pole lights in the parking lots and such like we did when we did the expansion back in 20, I think it was 15, that we did through there, but we're also trying to, to work through that. The Public Works, the, the, the structure that's there now, the salt storage building, one of the primary issues we're having is because we, what's in the dome, the dome's not large enough to serve our community and the dome is in the ideal space. Frankly, we created the situation when we sold land to the neighborhood of the north. Frankly, we created the situation when we sold land to the neighborhood of the north, Stonegate. We created that property line that we're now looking around going, we probably should have not sold them much. Keep in mind, that does back up to the residential, but everything around there is parking lots and they have parking lot lighting all over the parking lot. So they're looking currently at that. The structure we're talking about is a, a wall situation, probably eight feet in height with the, basically the can, the canvas roof, the dome type of thing versus the roof structure that you've got here now. So it's more of a, kind of translucent type situation. Pardon me? I believe it will be less than thirty-five feet, which is the maximum height in a residential zone. I can't, I can't confirm that right now. I believe it'll be smaller, at least to the point of the current dome that's there. And we're taking kind of an octagon footprint and trying to turn it into a rectangle, which is tricky. We talked about shifting it the other direction, which would have put it even greater mass facing the residential and it would have been more awkward. And part of the issue we're dealing with is that when there's a snow situation, our vehicles go out that drive and go through the senior center lot because generally the senior center is closed when we're in snow operations. So that gate opens up. So we're, we're constrained on two sides. The shorter we go, the more difficulty we have in trying to, trying to address that. So that's kind of what put us in the situation there. Ms. McBride, to the question about parking at the sheriff's office doors, what's not shown on here is we're envisioning basically the doors that face to the south, face Beauchamp Avenue that are there currently. We're envisioning those to be shut ninety-nine percent of the time and actually to have short-term parking along there, both for sheriff cruisers and the public. So you pull in and you could literally park in front of the garage door because the garage door is not going up and go in and utilize the drop, drop, drug, drop-off box or something like this off that driveway, which is shown there. It's a fairly wide distance, but that's what we're envisioning. And again, the, the storage would be on those sides, on those doors, so it would be intermittent use. The sheriff, when they come into the Sally Port, are actually using the inside of the sheriff building, which is again, not part of the current phase with MSA, but one we'll get into next, is actually to have about twelve vehicle parking spaces in the garage. You'd actually come in, there'd be a maneuverability area inside and that would access to the north side of the building. So again, it would provide more of a defined security on that south side because you go by now and those doors are wide open. Anybody can kind of go through that space. The question about, a couple more here, oh, recycling center. So we are, as Mr. Drury mentioned, in the process of doing an update to our two thousand and seventeen survey of our users there. That seventeen survey found that over fifty percent of the users were not from Anderson Township. It also found, that was actually done before we went into an agreement with Rumkey to provide curbside recycling. Yeah, curbside recycling, Anderson Township, where he started at just under sixty percent of our households. We now have over eighty-five percent of our households that are doing curbside recycling. And actually, we're working with Rumkey right now on a targeted mailing because Rumkey does not offer a trash service anymore without recycling. So literally all fifteen thousand of our households that are customers are paying for recycling, whether they use it or not. So we're now trying to focus on apartment communities and some condominium townhome communities, which is a, is a service, they just have to pay for it, but actually it's less than what I pay as a resident. So it's, it's part of that. The other issue we have with the drop-off center is there is, the center in Union Township was closed, hence the influx kind of to this area. So we've been talking with our neighbors about what they might do out east. And actually, we formerly had funds that paid for that. The funds have dramatically gone down and the cost has dramatically gone up. So in essence, the entire center is now not only subsidized by curbside recycling, it's paid for by the township as well. So we're, we're, we're actually, the people that are using or getting the free service paid for by the people that are paying for, for curbside. So it's a, it's a struggle that we're working with, but we, we're looking at the global picture and our recycling committee is literally meeting on the other side of that wall right now, talking through that issue. So we're, we're trying to be respectful and mindful of how we provide options to our residents. I think those are most of the questions. I don't know if there's anything else that, that Mr. Montgomery couldn't address, but I'm happy to try to answer those if I could, so.
Okay. Ms. Ward, any questions of this applicant?
No further questions, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lewis.
Back to the recycling. Doesn't township have like special events, like paper shredding, hazardous materials, electronics?
We have not had an event since two thousand and seventeen, nor have we forecasted to have. The only, the only thing we use this site for public-wise is the parade. So we'll have to figure out a new staging location for that, provided that continues. But we do not, we actually partner. We did a household event at Nagwell Middle School this past year and we're doing one at Woodland Mound for electronics this fall. So we're using off-site locations for, for those.
Great, thanks, that was my question.
Ms. McBride.
Now, I guess the only thing that I would ask is, would you be okay as the applicant agreeing to, when you are ready to move forward with lighting, for example, on the north side of the, we visited sheriff's building, to resubmit that for, you know, review and consideration? Because I, I think that that is a concern of, of the commission.
I don't see why not, looking around to, yeah. We certainly bring that back. We wanted to, we're not in a rush for that. We just wanted you to be mindful of the bigger picture and so.
Appreciate the overview, but, so you're not to the details yet, but we don't maybe want to approve the details.
I will just note, since Mr. Montgomery kind of alluded, the staging on this is that ideally, we would be in construction next year or later this year and through next year on the Public Works Facility would give us adequate time to start flushing out the rest of the details for the site. So this isn't something that we would be looking to, to get into until latter part of next year. And that salt building would probably stay through next winter, two winters, not just this coming, but the following winter as well, before we'd be in a situation of removing that. So we've, we've certainly got time to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Ellis.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Got a one additional question. Talked about screening of mechanical units. I assume the wash bay and repair bays are not air-conditioned and neither is the seventeen space parking area. It's just really the occupied, human occupied areas?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, alright. That's all my questions, thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to speak in favor of the application? Okay, seeing no movement, anyone like to speak opposed to the applica- application? Seeing mo- no movement, we will close the public hearing?
Did we have one other person who was sworn in or?
We did. She's chose not to speak. Wisely, probably, yeah. She's the applicant, okay. Alright, now we'll discuss amongst the commission. Ms. Ward, we'll start with you, please.
I don't have anything to add or ask, um.
Okay. Mr. Lewis.
Nothing, I, you know, I liked it when they had a baseball field there, but that's, that's, it's gone.
It says the drive-in movie theater.
I'm not as old as some other commissioners.
Ms. McBride, any rebuff to Mr. Lewis?
Okay, well, let's see here. I was just making some notes as I tend to do. So, I mean, I had some concerns about the, this, some of the plant material on the north side and I, but I think that we need to depend on our tree committee to do that. But I'm going to make some suggestions and let them review that. I think that we probably maybe want to put something in that all of the rooftop equipment will be screened just in case they end up putting another unit somewhere else on the roof. And then I guess I was, I had those additional spaces, but the way Mr. Severs described that, that's fine, that all the waste would be in enclosed, an enclosure per code. And then a provision that we would want to see, or staff would want to see, the photometric lighting plan prior to moving forward. Staff, commission, what would be your pleasure?
I think staff could do it, like I said, I kind of.
They've heard the conference.
Yes.
That's what, that's the discussion I didn't mean to.
Okay. Mr. Ellis, sorry.
That's okay.
Reading that script just takes the downings.
I know, it's a very difficult job. Well, quite a few comments on this actually, positive. One is moving these vehicles inside is extremely important. We all pay for those vehicles, whether it's the cruisers, the salt trucks and stuff. You keep those inside and secondly, allow them to be staged inside when there's an emergency. It makes a tremendous difference. So there's good value in what we're seeing here in this proposal. And number two, the salt dome kind of blows my mind that we're putting salt outside. It's rainy, it's, it's really, really important to get the salt inside. That makes a tremendous amount of sense. I, I can't remember where I've seen salt stored outside, so if we can get it inside, that's a, that's a great thing. The third thing is, this facility's been existing since all of us have been around here and longer, except for Mr. Lewis, apparently it used to be baseball. But it's, it's been that and this is just improving what we have there. It's not going to be a dramatic change. The recycling, I will speak for myself on this. It really is time for the recycling to go, in my opinion. I know people can get, have mixed opinions on that and it can be emotional because it's kind of nice to, it's closure, like I'm taking my recycling. But the township has made, done quite a bit of effort over the years to make it actually happen. We just heard Mr. Severs talk about a very high participation rate. And then secondly, other communities are taking that step. So we're like becoming the recycling go-to spot and maybe it's time to rethink that, maybe. The lighting, those are really important comments that Mr. Gothther made because whether we change the lighting fixtures or not, Paul will hear about it. Paul will hear about the lighting if it's too bright, so we might as well get that fixed now. It's, it is tremendously important to have that lit up well at night because there, when it's the snow emergency, all the emergency services, they need to be able to see what's going on and have a safe operating environment. And lastly, I'd say it looks pretty nice. I'm impressed with the work that's gone into it, whether it's the fencing, let's put some additional landscaping around the perimeter, the building architecture. So I think it's terrific that we get an opportunity to have some small input on this, but it's, it looks like it's really well-needed to me.
Thank you. I think the only sort of comments beyond the lighting of the, my questions is, you know, sort of the unknown height and details around the salt storage. You know, other applicants, we have PUDs and we want details because we really want to know what, excuse me, we're approving. So without that sort of knowledge, I don't think we can hold, we should hold that up. I think we should put a condition on a maximum height and if it exceeds that height, then they have to come back to the commission to revise the PUD as a major modification. You know, with the lighting, you know, again, a concern for the areas in the north. You know, couldn't really see the lights when I visited the site, see what's there now. But, you know, anytime you have lights that you see the source, it has potential of being a concern to neighbors. So that was just my concern about the salt storage. You know, I think the location, the setback with the drive, with the parking on the other side, increasing the landscaping there, getting more height in the landscaping rather than a three-foot azalea or something would probably make a lot of sense to break that view up, you know. So those are sort of my comments. With, anyone else have any additional comments?
No, I was just looking for what was the square footage in parking today versus proposed to see if there was a linear relationship with the increase. And it sounds like staff has determined through their process that parking's fine, the number's fine. And I, you know, I appreciate that and I support that.
Alright, with that, anyone like to make, make a motion?
If I can read all my notes, I will do that. Let's see, I would make a motion that we approve in nursing case two dash twenty-two-five PUD, Anderson Township Operations Center, seventy-nine fifty-four Beauchamp Avenue, that that approval would be that this commission finds that it's consistent with our PUD standards, with our land use and development initiatives, that it meets the intent and spirit of our zoning resolution, that it has no adverse effects per the requirements and that it's consistent with all Anderson Township adopted plans. With variances considered under standards, Article three point five, case six, which is the parking lot landscaping and Article five point four, the setback from the residential to the north property line. In addition to that, that the following conditions be attached to that approval, that the bike racks recommended and required by our zoning code, recommended by our staff, be incorporated into the plan, that the landscape plan be revised to increase the height of the inkberry on the north property line from twenty-four inches to at least thirty-six inches, that the hydrangeas that are shown north of the salt proposed, salt storage building, directly adjacent to the building be replaced with leather leaf viburnum shrubs, preferably forty-eight inches in height or as recommended following review by the tree committee. If they feel there are other species or whatever that's more appropriate, that we would go with whatever their recommendation would be. That all of the rooftop equipment would be screened, that all of the waste facilities would be in enclosed surroundings per required by our zoning resolution and that lighting plan, photometric lighting plan be revised and resubmitted back to staff for review and approval. However, if any of those fixtures either pull or, new fixtures either pull or building mounted, reach, exceed the height of twenty-four feet, that they would come back to this, this commission for review and approval. And I think that's it.
Salt storage building height?
The height?
Of the salt storage building? We're going to put a maximum on it?
It was thirty-five feet.
That's what we were told, but. Right.
I'd say it has to be consistent with what was.
I, I took it that it would be, but that the, the salt storage building would have a maximum height of thirty-five feet.
That'd be great, thank you.
He can sleep tonight now.
Yes. Anyone like the second emotion?
I second.
Thank you. Ms. Donovan, you please call roll.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Gothther?
Yes. Thank you very much. Mr. Drury, insight in the next month potentially?
We have the U-Haul case that was continued last month. So we do have that one. Today was actually our, it's middle deadline. Remember, the meeting is a week earlier because of Memorial Day. Yes, so today was our deadline and that's the only case we'll, we'll have is the U-Haul case.
Alright, thank you. Motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.